This meeting to order is 7:31. We have a guest tonight from our local Brownie tree, Kaylee Formolo, who is going to meet us in the black sluke. Kaylee, you want to come up here?
Where am I getting the reader?
I have no idea.
Come on up, Kaylee. Join us right up here in the black.
Does anybody streaming the meeting?
Right. You want to come up here and present the council with dinner? Thank you so much, Kaylee. Kaylee joined by her sister Sydney, who is a Girl Scouts in the back. And there's Sydney. Why don't you stand right up here and kind of, there you go. That's good. Come on up front. There you go. So that's good. You can hold up the box of Girl Scout. These are free advertising stuff.
Definitely don't need it, though.
Yeah. Thank you so much. So they're going to stay for a little bit. Thank you. We do have a proclamation coming up for Girl Scout Week. So can I, okay, so let me just start this meeting out. This meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the open public meetings law. This meeting of March 13, 2023 was included in a list of meeting notices sent to the Hunter County Democrat for your use on January 5, 2023, posted on the bulletin board for a hall on that date, and has remained continuously posted as required. In addition, a copy of this notice is and now has been available to the public and is on file in the borough, in the office of the borough. Can I even roll call Mr. Humphrey?
Ms. Engelhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Tilly?
It's Tilly.
Here.
Ms. Carroll?
Yes, thank you. We do have under consent a proclamation for Girl Scout. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Rosetti, who has a daughter also in Girl Scouts, to please read the proclamation.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. So whereas March 12, 2023 marks the 111th anniversary of Girl Scouts of the USA, the largest and most impactful leadership program for girls in the world, and whereas today more than 50 million women, trailblazers, visionaries, and leaders are Girl Scout alums who have made the world a better place, whereas in July 2023, Girl Scouts will host its triennial convention where more than 10,000 girls, alums, and supporters from across the movement will gather to explore, create, and grow alongside thousands of fellow changemakers, dreamers, and doers. And whereas during a time when girls are dealing with the impacts of pandemic-related learning loss, Girl Scouts offers important out-of-school and after-school learning enrichment and skill-building opportunities that expand their world, allow them to cultivate their talents, and ensure they can confidently pursue their passions and make the world a better place. And whereas since its beginning, Girl Scouts has emphasized public service and civic engagement and has fostered a sense of community in girls. And whereas during a time when girls are experiencing increased levels of anxiety, stress, loneliness, and depression, Girl Scouts continues to provide community, consistency, and connection for girls and is a safe haven in all the uncertainty. And whereas Girl Scouts longstanding commitment to getting girls outdoors, including exciting summer camp experiences, instills a lifelong appreciation for nature and the environment, is more critical than ever as we emerge from the pandemic. And whereas at a time when civics education is missing from many schools, Girl Scouts engages girls of all grade levels in civics programming that deepens their understanding of democracy and government, prepares them for a lifetime of civic engagement, and motivates them to take action on issues that are important to them. And whereas Girl Scouts offers girls 21st century programming in science, technology, engineering, and math, the outdoors, entrepreneurship, and beyond, helping girls develop invaluable life skills. And whereas Gold Award Girl Scouts take on projects that have a measurable and sustainable impact on a community by assessing a need, designing a solution, completing a project, and inspiring others to sustain it. And whereas as a member organization of the World Association of Girl Guides and Girl Scouts, Girl Scouts is part of an international sisterhood of 10 million girls and young women in 152 countries and is committed to offering girls more opportunities to engage with communities worldwide, make meaningful global connections, and explore global citizenship. And whereas Girl Scouts Heart of New Jersey serves 11,000-plus girls across New Jersey. And then, Mayor, do you want to do the last little section there?
No, you can read it.
All right. It says, "Now therefore, I, Marsha Carroll, Mayor Carroll, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor, do hereby applaud the Girl Scout Movement and Girl Scouts Heart of New Jersey for providing girls with a safe, inclusive, all-girls space where they can hone their skills and develop leadership abilities. And I declare the 13th day of March 2023 to be Girl Scout Week."
Thank you so much, Councilwoman. Well, here's the agenda. We wanted to say congratulations to our Brownie and Girl Scout celebration Girl Scout Week to the Councilwoman's daughter as well, and Girl Scouts and Brownies everywhere.
Thank you, Mayor.
So I need, we need to amend our agenda tonight. We got in on time and notice under consent, a resolution in support of funding for the YMCA through our congressman. We did not get on time the amendment request that I sent out this afternoon to approve the solstice night. So can I have a motion to amend the agenda to approve the solstice night?
Tilly, over.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So we'll be doing that as well, which this agenda does show. Like I said, it was just a matter of not being able to notice the funding number. So I just want to talk about just one item, which is earmarks that have been requested from both our state senator and our congressman. So Senators Wicker has offered to put an earmark into the state budget for us for $20,000 to complete Phase 2A of the police building, which is the processing area. We have about 170,000 set aside for that right now. The project is going to be somewhere between 25,000 and 450,000. So he has data that he's going to be putting that into the state budget, which we will know if the governor, you know, even if it survives the state budget, the governor has lined in a veto. So once he signs it and returns it back to the legislature, it'll be somewhere, got to be adopted by the, no, later than the first July. They can do it earlier. And then he's got probably 48 hours to do his vetoes. So sometime at the end of June, early July, he should know. We also are working on a request that Mr. Humphrey and Corporal O'Malley are working on to finish the police building as well as the well that's supposed to be at that site. Combined total of the two is probably somewhere around $4 million. That is going to Congressman Kinning as well as Senators Booker and Senator Menendez asking for that money. Congressman Kane, I'm not sure how many municipalities he represents, probably well north of 100. Every congressman in the United States get put in 15 requests. Doesn't mean they're going to survive at all, but that's the number he gets to put in. And we are also putting in a resolution supporting a wise request from the Department of Labor here in town. Of course, the investment that they're willing to put in town is important to the town. And that, I think, is what I want to talk about. Just gonna move around here. Ms. Tilly, have a report?
Yeah. I had a, last week I had an FCP corporal meeting as well as an HPC house tour meeting. Again, the house tour is on Saturday, June 3. Please look for updated information on the website. We're going to be selling the tickets through Eventbrite. That information will be looked at too tomorrow. I have DPW meeting morning. I have an FCP meeting in late afternoon and then a bar after the meeting in the evening. Wednesday is the HPC meeting, and then the following Wednesday on the 22nd is the HPC house tour meeting. That meeting will be held here, excuse me, in Borough Hall. If you're interested in volunteering for the HPC house tour or you want to learn a little more about it, come to the meeting and we will let you know all about it. And I just want to say it's good to see Lois Stewart and as well as the rest in the audience today. Welcome. Thank you, everybody, for coming to.
That's it, ma'am. Thank you. Ms. Rosetti, your report?
Thank you, Mayor. Pretty short this week, but there was a shade tree commission meeting I attended last Wednesday. They all extended their appreciation for how quickly their numbers were amended so that they could up their numbers to seven members. So they're very appreciative, as well as getting their adopt-a-tree form remedied. Mike Humphrey, thank you for helping with that. Otherwise, business as usual. They're just mostly working on their five-year plans to maintain their status with the state as the Shade Tree Commission. And their next meeting, though, will be April 12th, which will be hybrid. That's all I've got for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Engelhardt?
Sure. Thank you. I want to say related to parks, FRB opening day is April 1st. So that's always a really fun day in the borough for not only the participants of the baseball league, but all the neighbors as well. Yesterday, the Piny Garden had a seed swap in, I think it was at Factory Fuel or at DIY. So I'm sure they'll have more opportunities now that the warm weather is going to be starting soon for you to get involved with that. On Saturday, I attended the Beacon Municipalities council members' budget training. So that was a fun Saturday for me. But I learned a ton and it was really helpful and very timely, obviously, with tonight's budget that we got in our mailboxes on Friday. So that was really, really timely. So thank you for the opportunity for sending me to that. Schools, March 21st at 7:00 PM, right down the street here at Riffus, the county, the sponsor, something called Music in Our Schools. It is funded by the county. The Harmonizers, the County Wind Symphony, and the local seventh, sorry, fifth and sixth grade students from Riffus will be performing there. So I really would encourage everybody to go, especially the fifth and sixth grade music program in the district was really hurt by COVID. There was a year and a half of no music or learning. And as a result, the seventh grade is really light on musicians. So really encouraged to go over and support not only our really talented countywide adult musicians, but the kids at Riffus. It's a really great opportunity for them to shine.
You said that was the 21st?
It's 21st at 7:00 PM.
And it's open to the public and free?
It is open to the public and free. Thank you for clarifying that. You're absolutely right. Last Friday, the mayor and I both attended the reopening of Possibility's Riff Store. And the, and one of the things they did ask was, and it's for such a good cause, if you guys have ever, you know, not had an opportunity to go over there, they support abilities of Northwest Jersey and they, with their bigger space, they need more donations. So please consider donating to the Riff Store. It looks beautiful and it's all color-coordinated. And I, you know, I've been to lots of Riff Stores over the years. This is a really nice one we have right in town. So please take advantage of it and please donate generously. Let's see. Oh, animal control. The officer reported to me that this year has been an unusually bad year. They've had at least a half a dozen loose dogs without collars, without licenses, without tags loose around town. You know, dogs get out once in a while and you have your tags on them and it's great. And the police are so helpful and help, you know, reunite wandering four-footed friends. But when they do not have the tags, they do not have their licenses. And, you know, not only is it a burden on our police because we're taking them away from doing the other important things that they need to be doing around town, but your dog will be impounded. And you can't just say, oh, Mike, you know, if somebody can't say, oh, yeah, I know whose dog that is. It's my friend. I'll come grab it. You need proof that you own this dog. They won't just give it to anybody. Your dog will be impounded. It's unusually high count. So please, 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 if you haven't already, the date has passed, but please get your dog and cat registered. And as far as the planning board goes, we have a pretty light agenda tomorrow night, 7 o'clock. But what is on the agenda is two items that are important. One is the Master Plan Subcommittee, where we're trying to convert the recommendations of the Master Plan from last year into the live ordinances, which is exciting. The mayor and I attended another Subcommittee meeting on that. So we'll be giving an update at tomorrow's next meeting on that, as well as the, kind of the rules of engagement, I guess, for lack of better word. That committee was working hard and have their recommendations tomorrow. So that'll all be on the agenda tomorrow night. So it's a pretty light meeting. If there's any questions or comments relating to the, any of the candidate ordinances as we go forward in the agenda, I can address those later. And yeah, I guess that's it.
Thank you. One thing on the possibility donations, they are requesting it be brought into the store when you're open and not just left.
Yes, thank you.
Where is it located?
It's right, it's right at, it's down from Staples in the Old Two-One important store.
Thanks, Lois. I should have mentioned that.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Short report. Library just had the children's room painted on the first, so come take a look. It looks great. We also have marvelous March reading, which is going on. The month of March, people get prizes for reading, so don't hesitate to stop and you grab a book and you're rewarded. 17th is the next meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Parker?
Yeah. So him and I actually facilitated a meeting with FCP police and DPW. Let me show you the reputation of DPW. And the whole idea was to get protocols in place for scheduled meeting events and making sure that they are done properly and streets and things like that and budgeting a little bit. So it's actually really, really good. But that came out that the chief of police actually has put together a protocol and wants to present it to the council. So what I'd like to do is get them, get him on the constant, on the meeting, working session next, next meeting, if that's possible, before the 27th.
Robin's not available for that meeting. Is that okay?
Yeah, because this has to do with, with the police and the protocol with, with the two police. With that said, and you're leading, still my project. So leading into that is that Ben Robin, Ed Robin, we're asking Mike Campion and Jerry will come on the April 11th meeting to present not only the present 2023's goals and objectives and how they're going to enter, integrate, and to make me sure that everybody's on the same page. Yeah. So that's, that's, that was, that was the goal.
Is that their full application or just?
That's the calendar over Jerry?
27th.
The 27th is just for, it's Jerry. It's our, it's our packet.
It's the packet.
Yeah. Well, I didn't know what you meant. I'm sorry. Yes. Okay. Yes. It's their packet. And then FCP, then Robin will come and do the follow-up to that. That said, for 2022's wrap-up, I asked Robin to provide me with a written report in which I will discuss with and hand out to everybody on the 27th.
Okay.
So that we're all caught up and everybody's on the same page and we kind of know what happened. The other thing is that there's a, there's a gap between the people who call it to schedule events and there's no gatekeeper to figure out if it's, if it's been booked or not. And so there seems to be a lot of conflict with that. So what I volunteered to do is that I will be the gatekeeper. They will refer to me and then I will farm it out. Because it's got to be someone that's going to be.
Need to make sure that there's not overlapping.
Yeah.
Event.
Exactly.
So that somebody like, I don't know, like a tea bar is doesn't have a great big carriage house sale at the same time and something else. Unless we want it to happen that way.
Well, yeah, I mean, but that would be something like with putting in a bet.
Right.
What, what this is, is that, you know, Tony wants to have a Jake Open House and somebody else is trying to book that, that same day. There's something booked that same day. So there's this conflict with the police and with DPW. So I want to make sure that everybody is communicating, you know, one rope going in the same direction. So that's, that's. So the other thing is that Robin is working on a grant for AARP, which we all kind of was cheering about. I just think this is a great thing. And the AARP grant is for walking communities for seniors. So it's actually targeting seniors. So it'd be targeting seniors in the Plumington Borough Walking Community. And so AARP is offering grants, so we are going for that grant. So yeah, it's just, you know, when I read it, it was like, we got to do this. The other thing, the bigger news is that we finally are getting to the newsletter. So we are working on a contract for, with a company called LPI for a newsletter. Once Chris gives us his blessing on the contract, we will sign. Here's the beautiful thing. There's no cost to the borough at all. There's nothing coming out of our pocket. It's all going to be done by advertisements. So the company will sell the advertisements. We will give the content. They will publish and then we'll decide how we're going to distribute. Right now, because the budget's so tight, what I'm actually recommending is that we will either, they will either supply us with a new sand that we can put some certain places, or we'll ask stores or businesses to put it in bigger, in their places. So when people come in, they can pick up. Anyway, the bigger news is that that's happening. What I'd like to see is that we get people like organizations like the Girl Scouts involved, the Boy Scouts involved. Definitely the Y have some information on the Y. Get, just, just, I want it to be, it, the goal is to get it to be a community paper. So everyone knows what's going on in the community. That includes the development, that includes any ordinances that's happened, that we want to make sure that everybody knows. It's about anything that is information that keeps everybody on the same page, one rope, one direction. That's the whole, that's the whole idea. So that is, that's what I think my goal is to be. Now, the beautification, the last thing is I'm working with beautification. So don't know where that's going yet. I'm going to be upfront and honest. I don't know where that's going yet. I'm working on it. So hopefully over the next, once we get these two things underway, then beautification next. That's it.
Thank you, Councilman. Council President?
All right. Good evening, everybody. I got a few items. Police, the department, like evidence, know that there is a new stop sign being placed on the corner of Church Green and Brown. So please be mindful of this new stop in town. The officers will be out educating over the next few weeks on motoring and the, and the new stop signs. So please pay attention and observe all traffic signs. Courts, I was able to last week speak with Olivia Barrett, the court administrator there for us, just to get a basic understanding of what's going on. We should have some more information forthcoming regarding mergers and other information. Today, March 13th, there was a court session and the violation for, just finished for principals, Principals of Municipal Court Administration, one class successfully. I was contacted by former council member Jessica Hand. She asked me to share some Piny Garden news. As was mentioned by Councilwoman Engelhardt, there was a seed swap yesterday at Plumington DIY. It was very well attended. The Piny Gardens planning a seed starting class and that date is to be determined. And they will also be planning a park cleanup at Tuckamakan soon. They will be pick up, tracked, and brushed. The brush will be laid in the bottoms of the garden beds and will be covered with soil. If anyone's interested in helping out or to reserve a spot, please email plumingtonboroughcommunitygarden@gmail.com or reach out to them on their Facebook or Instagram pages. And finally, part of my report, I want to make a statement. And this is by no stretch simple. It's a very difficult thing for me to say. I did speak with Councilman Johnson previous and I told him I was going to be making a statement. It was very clear. So in my role as council president, I feel that it's important for me to speak for the integrity of the council. And I think it's really important to put Plumington Borough first. I speak to, I speak as council president, but I speak to Councilman Johnson as a colleague and a friend. I can't imagine what what you have to deal with in addition to this work, which can be very hard and taxing and time-consuming. And last meeting, we did censure Councilman Johnson solely for these concerns. We don't have the legal authority to remove anyone. We have the legal authority to do any of that. Certainly, Councilman Johnson has the ability to do that. But I just, I wanted to just say to Councilman Johnson that I respect you and I am so sorry about everything. But I think it might be a good idea to resign because there are, there are jobs to do and, and there may be some appropriate persons to step in while you deal with, with all of these painful and, and I cannot imagine challenging events in your life. And that's it. I don't want any further conversation. I just wanted to make that statement and thanks for listening.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Humphrey, administrator's report?
Probably the most important thing, the election dates have changed. So election filings are due now, Monday, March 27th. It's 71 days lead now. Those pass by the, by the state.
74 days lead.
73. It's actually 73.
I read legislation. That's okay. Go ahead. March 27.
March 27th. So all filings have to be in and the primary election date is June 6th. The court is closed on Friday, March 17th due to training for both of the employees at the court. I can help you with the event scheduling and make it easy for everybody and accessible for everybody. You brought up the federal earmarks. So I've been working with the the Police Department of Brian on that and having discussion with the US meeting tomorrow. The Stormwater Management Grant has been submitted for $25,000. So that is really to help with planning where the MS Word permitting. The county grant has been submitted. I don't have a time where they're going to
Make a decision.
Approve, but hopefully that will be in the next, hopefully maybe as soon as the next county meeting. How they commission me. We've applied for over $335,000. So we've, much of that is for the new police department for design work and other things like emergency generators and so on. And we'll be bringing up during the work session a draft of a candidate's application for those firms that want to apply for one of our licenses. And that's it.
Thank you. All right. We're opening up to public comments. Please try to keep your comments down to three minutes. We'll start with people that are here in person. If you need your name and your municipality, if you not have your address, if you have anything you want to bring to the body on that.
Good evening. Jeff Kane, 54 Broad Street, Plumington.
Good evening, Jeff Kane, fifty four Broad Street, Flemington. I just wanted to thank you in advance for your continued support of what has been now a six year effort to reopen the Flemington Community Pool. The challenges that this borough faces are great and there are many. And I understand that you as the governing body have to focus on many of those and I am so appreciative of your support for the YMCA. My own efforts to try and get that pool open simultaneous while we deal with other challenges. We've all seen it as a result of the pandemic, but we also saw it for the years two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen. When the pool did not open because it had fallen into disrepair. And the previous organization had run out of money. We are so fortunate that the Y took it on, really, we are so fortunate that the Y took it on because it provides a professional organization who can manage the pool. Now we just need the funds. So we were successful in getting a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar earmark from Congress last year. And we're thankful for your support and putting in for an additional two million dollars this year. It will make such a huge difference in the lives of the surrounding community, particularly for children and seniors. Because it provides a relaxed form of recreation where people can come together. Between May and September and connect. It's such a vital asset, I experienced it myself while it was open with my daughter and my family. And I'm hopeful that we can restore that again for the families of our community who need it so, so badly. But I am so thankful for your continued support in this effort. We're gonna get it open someday, I just can't say which day it is. Thank you.
Anybody else from, it's here.
Adrian Fisaro, twenty three Maple Avenue. Uh, this isn't difficult for me, I'm here as a resident. I'm here as a former campaign manager for certain, Mr. Johnston. It's time to step down. We look corrupt. You're making the rest of the people that are sitting up there next to you, didn't sell undercover, you're making them look bad. It's enough, it's enough, I'm embarrassed, I'm embarrassed for my community. I'm embarrassed for the safety of our community, I'm embarrassed for our police force that they had to be out there, I live across from you, sir. I saw the whole thing. And it's enough, and it's not the first time. And that's all I've got to say, and I'm not sorry about it, Jeremy, God bless you, but um, you're very lucky to have children personally. That's it.
Uh, Jessica Abbott, I live on Church Street, right by the new stop sign, thanks guys, so great. It is amazing. My son almost blew it the first time because we didn't know it was there, but then we didn't. But it's incredible, thank you.
One of the number one campaign, campaign complaints I heard was your street and Church Street.
Unbelievable.
Brown Street and Church Street.
I didn't even know I was gonna thank you for that when I came here, but um, I'm really here to talk about the pool. And I was gonna read a letter on behalf of my daughter who couldn't join us, if that's alright, if you don't mind. She is in Boston College, she is nineteen. Um, so she said, obviously, I'm Jessica, but I'm reading her. Uh, good evening, my name is Molly Abbott, I'm an economics student at Boston College in class of twenty twenty five. And the product of the Flemington Raritan Community Pool. I regret not being able to join via Zoom tonight, I'm currently in a meeting. I could talk for hours about how much the pool needs to be, but I'll try to keep it to just the highway.
When you're little, very few things are certain. You don't know what's for dinner or what you're going to do tomorrow or what the weather's supposed to be like. But for me, one thing was always sure, come summertime, it was swim season. Swim season was more than just another sports season, swim season meant a community pool. I got to be with my friends every day, including people who would, would not otherwise hang out with. And then I can get to hang out with the cool older girls while also being a cool older girl to someone else. There was space for everyone at FRCP. I learned so much more than aquatic skills during those summers. I learned how to be a mentor, but also a mentee. I learned the power of unity and loyalty, I learned the importance of hard work. I learned how to heat meats, how to sign people in at the front desk, how to most effectively climb up the netting on the really big slide. How to stay in the water for eight straight hours without complaining about the pole. But most importantly, I learned what community meant. I learned about pitching in, rolling lane lines and trading a quarter deposit for a basketball. My swim friends are now all in college, the cool older girls have graduated. The seven and eight year olds I once piggybacked are now in high school. And the people with whom I once shared soft pretzels under picnic tables are now connecting with me online then. Flemington is the best place to grow up, as I now know, but it's not exactly exciting as a kid. Even so, when dreaming about my future at the ripe age of seven, I decided that I would live in Flemington as an adult, so all my kids could be on swim. They all work at the snack bar and have sunny afternoons with their friends. Okay, enough emotion, brass tacks, hard skills, impact on my life, FRCP set me up for practical success. I learned more organizational skills at swim meets than I did in all my many years of school. My mom reminisces about how I could look at a heat sheet once and then keep all the parents informed about which event we were on, who was swimming. How long until I needed to line up behind the blocks and score a meet. Even as kids, we were encouraged to help marshal younger teammates and lend a hand. This pool is where I learned how to organize people while keeping team spirit high. These skills have been instrumental in my life thus far. As an HCY swim coach of very young kids during the pandemic, a large part of my job was. Caring cats, but also keeping the cats happy and giggling and smiling and six feet apart in the water. I showed all of my FRCP lessons into that call. Currently, I serve as the Director of Operations for Boston College Women's Soccer. I run the business side of our Division One ACC soccer team. Remembering heats and lanes and memorizing dietary instructions, recalling recruiting notes from that one tournament two weeks ago. And reserving travel for the lot of us. This is a potential long-term career path for me and one I never would have pursued without my swim team foundation. I don't wanna know the version of me that didn't grow up at Flemington Raritan Community Pool. Thank you all for your support, it means the world to me, my swim friends and all the wonderful kids who will be fortunate enough at the same time childhood I did. It's a doubt that you meant to hear a pro. Paying for their application to the congressman and if we get a copy of it for our record, it'll be. Absolutely, we appreciate it. So, thank you. Anybody else from the public have any comments?
I'm gonna start, uh. I just have a few concern, number one, after listening to the budget meeting, I'm wondering what. Shared services, I know we, we shouldn't be looking at shared tours, what shared services are we considering? Uh, approaching or.
But there is a, there is a contract consideration under consent tonight. With uh, not actually it's not under consent, I think it's under the regular agenda to do a shared court within the um. Township, which will save the borough about twenty five thousand dollars a year. Um, we are exploring other options with the township because they're all contractual, I really can't talk about.
But you are pursuing.
We're always pursuing, absolutely, Humphrey's really good at pursuing.
Okay, I'm glad to hear.
Well, with the county.
Thank you, that's half of the fifty thousand euros.
Thank you, pardon.
That's half of the fifty thousand.
But that's already in the budget.
I understand, I was, I was joking.
Already in counties were in the budget. Contract. Tonight, doesn't have tonight, it's coming out of the budget.
Okay, the, I, I think I was wondering about is the energy aggregation program. There was always talk about doing something that would save. Energy fees for the borough, what's the situation or not?
Oh, no, okay, so we had uh, passed a resolution in support. Now we're waiting for them to get the quotes. If the quotes are lower than the going rate, then we go into it. So each year, um, when they um. Go to bid on the energy. Um, if the cost is not enough of the savings, then they don't, it, it's not. Yeah, so they, we're back into it this year, uh, they have not gone through the. Uh, the bid process, but when they do and it becomes a lower, then we'll be able to see a savings.
No, I understand if you don't save money and do it. Uh, I wanted to ask what after. Thing of the line I am for the salaries, what percentage increase are the borough employees? Uh, being provided under the twenty twenty three.
Two percent for non-union and then I don't know what's the police contract, what they increased this year. Um, and I don't know what he put in for the DPW, but I think two. Either two or two and a half percent he booked. But I think it's two, two percent is what he estimated, why not, I'm sure I look at you in strong frame. But I think it's anybody who's not contractual, I believe he put in about.
And when do those contracts come up that you just.
The PPA contract was negotiated last year. And the uh, DPW's contract is being, which is currently being negotiated now.
Uh huh, so we know what the police increase would be under. But that's, that's a done deal.
Totally public information, yeah, I'm sure.
Yes, who's working with the DPW?
Is Engelhardt and Ms. Tilly.
I hope you'll be.
We're working hard.
Okay, uh, and I was wondering. Who gets healthcare coverage paid for by this borough?
Full-time employees only by state law unless they were prior grandfather in. Prior to change in the law in two thousand seventeen.
And do, did we have anyone grandfathered?
Yes, uh, somebody like Jeff Klein's grandfather, for example. It was part-time.
How many of those people did we have that are.
Maybe. I think maybe one person at the library. Or a person, I think there was maybe one or two of the part-time ladies at the library. It's that, yeah, I agree. Otherwise, under, under state law, you have to keep what comes.
But, but going forward from this.
Wait one second.
There are three in the library that are at the state health benefits.
They're all full-time, any part-time at the library?
I couldn't hear what you.
Thank you for clarifying. They're just full-time in the library, we get state healthcare benefits, no part-timers at the library, get it.
And Jeff Klein, so Jeffrey the Librarian and Jeff Klein. Otherwise, it's full-time employees.
Right.
And so no one on the council gets their.
Absolutely not, completely.
Okay, well you.
Not, not. If there's, there's loopholes around, but not with state healthcare benefits.
Well, it needs to be that some people did get their.
Not this group.
Health insurance.
Not this group.
I think on the county level, I did.
There, on the county, so, so. Forgetting state healthcare benefits, but um. You just can't get state health, we can, we can still, if we wanted to put in the budget and disclose it publicly that we were all gonna get private healthcare. That's not illegal, getting state healthcare is illegal, that's the loophole. That's the loophole.
Thank you very much.
Taxpayer dollars should not be paid for part-time employees, elected officials getting healthcare. So, in my perspective. Anybody else from the, here, yes ma'am. I just need your name and your municipality for the record. I need the mic.
There's smokes remarking, if you wanna sit.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor of Council Members and Attendees, I am Susan Lack, CEO of Huntington Helpline. Salsa Night has a, over a true decade history in the borough. Huntington Helpline has been running it for almost ten years now. It has been one of the most exciting events in Flemington, attracting people from all over the state and beyond. It celebrates the business and residential assets of Flemington and its welcoming diversity. It is the largest fundraiser for Helpline, as well as one of the largest events for the borough and the county. About ten thousand people attended last year alone. The salsa night vendor fees help us to provide free services and programs to Flemington residents in need. Including our next door center, shelter for the homeless during Code Blue, which we also offer OEM. During the crisis, literacy services so residents can increase their English proficiency to apply for and keep jobs. Daily and emergency services to seniors living isolated and often with food scarcity and so much more. We receive no monetary assistance from the borough to provide these services, yet our success abounds. I'd love to give you a tour of Helpline to learn about this fifty-four year old institution. Operating twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days of the year. Salsa Night helps fund these free services, but first, we pay for services such as the police to run the event. As well as other costs to ensure a safe yet entertaining environment. Our cost to run is about twelve thousand dollars before we see a so-called profit. Our Board of Trustees and volunteers are still on the street at midnight assisting DPW where possible and clean up. To be a good neighbor and business friend. We pay those costs through sponsorships and vendor fees. It is imperative that we attract more vendors, not less, to accommodate those costs. As well as provide funding for our community services. I emailed the mayor asking that the fees be waived. However, I now understand the need to pay for office staff and infrastructure. And believe the fees are fair, except for this caveat. Our event fee plus the food vendor fee together pose a hardship on the vendor who takes a risk in coming to the event. Not knowing how much food they will sell. Therefore, I implore the council to reduce the out-of-town fee that's been suggested to fifty dollars per vendor. Reducing it to fifty dollars would be much more palatable, unintended, budget-wise and psychologically. A win-win for all. The more out-of-town vendors we have, the more people come to Salsa Night. As new and diversified food vendors are an attraction. While some may say attendees do not stray from the festival site. I argue that this introduction makes them want to come back and see more of the borough. The marketing one-on-one goal of any festival or event. Therefore, my only ask is that you reduce the out-of-town vendor fee to fifty dollars. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you so much, and we did amend, ended up approving it tonight. And I swear to you, I don't remember seeing that originally.
Not, no problem. No problem, because I, somebody changed my mind and because I'm in the midst of doing a Helpline budget and understand your budget. And I'm willing to compromise, but it really would make a huge difference, it's only twenty-five dollars. But again, when somebody sees that on paper, they're more active.
Susan, I'm gonna ask if you'd reach out to me.
Absolutely, I, I bet on my agenda.
And then, yeah, if you can reach out, hey, there's a couple of things I'd like to discuss with you in terms of the events.
Great, and I hope you all come to the event, but I meant it about coming to Helpline, because even though we're fifty-four years old. Things have changed over those five decades and you would be wowed, I promise you. And the community services we provide free to everyone, including seniors, it's one of our biggest, biggest, biggest. Divisions and it's amazing how many people have said to us, you saved my life.
I just wanna say, when I went into the legislature in two thousand six, I hired my, my. Office manager slash uh, person who took all of my phone calls from Helpline. She um. Got a reputation among all of the legislative offices of being able to navigate. Really difficult net, diapers calls, people who are upset with. The whole driver's license thing and, and married and divorced last names, people on the ledge. And other legislators were asking me where I found her, she had quite a reputation. Um, for just being a calming and soothing person on the phone, never got upset with anybody. And I told them all that I spilled her from our local Helpline and a number of legislators made out a model. Did the same, so I will say thank.
I tell all our new employees, you will know, whether you stay or go, you will know more about this county. And what's out there and how it can help people than you ever imagined, and we have the resources here, it's just that people don't know.
Yeah, well, appreciate it.
Tell everyone to call Helpline.
Wanted to say, it is a great organization, I volunteered there for a couple of months last year, so you guys.
And our volunteer soccer program addresses the food scarcity of so many seniors and people don't realize that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You can always put an article in Tony's newsletter.
I, I already, I wrote it down.
Excellent, uh, okay, anybody on, anybody online who has any comments or questions?
Yeah, Karen Becker. Okay, she's on that.
Okay, Miss Becker, I'd see your municipality for the record.
You're a mute Karen.
Thank you, Karen Becker, Raritan Township. Um, I was on your, your uh, budget call uh, that began at six thirty and I, I wanted to ask a question, my computer. Shut down, I lost my internet at the very end. Um, I was curious, um, I'm very interested in, in Flemington Borough because my mother lives there. For several years, she's in the Herman Cap building. And I heard you mention that there's a lying, line item uh, for Herman Cap and I was just curious. If you would be able to tell me just on a high level what benefits they receive or if there's somewhere. Some resource that I can, can find to find out what, what monies go toward that building and what uh, the residents there uh, benefit from.
That was the, the pilot. Yeah, so that, so that facility was originally one of the county-owned facilities and the county donated it. To Flemington to turn it into a uh, low moderate income senior only apartment complex. Back around the year two thousand, nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand. And uh, because it was coming. And because it was coming, it, it was, it was, once it was sold. It would have gone, you know, to become a tax-ratable and negotiation at the time. And I can speak on this because I was a freeholder when this happened, was that the building would pay payment in lieu of taxes. So it pays about twenty thousand dollars a year instead of paying any taxes whatsoever. It still receives fire and rescue squad protection, police protection. The roads around that building are plowed, there's lights on the street, it gets all the services. Any residents would have in this town, but it doesn't pay taxes, it pays. Paying the lieu of taxes, which is substantially less than that building would have paid had it been a regular tax-paying building.
Okay, all right, and, and a big shout-out to the police and the EMTs because they have been at my parents' house many times, so thank you for, for all that. Unfortunately, and I'd just like to make a comment too while I, while I'm here. I, I just would like to thank Councilman Long for his statement and request to Councilman Johnson to resign. And I do hope that Councilman Johnson takes that request to heart and does the right thing and resign, and that's all, thank you very much.
Great, Ms. Becker, anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Ingram, let me bring him in.
Yeah, who's that?
Mike Ingram. Did he come in?
No.
He's gotta accept it.
Hello, Ms. Becker, I'd just need your municipality, please.
You need to unmute.
How's it going, Flemington Borough, I live on Cappener Street, I'm at twelfth Cappener Street. Actually, so I just wanted to thank council for the time, I see on the agenda today that we're talking about the handicap spot that was put in front of fourteen Cappener. And I do want to just make a few points known about that spot. It is not ever occupied. It, it, the resident who requested that spot does not live there. Has not lived there for well, almost over eight months or so. There are only five spots in front of Cappener, ten and twelve Cappener do not have any parking spots whatsoever. They have no driveway at all.
For a second, if you, we have a public hearing on that, none of these comments will be part of that record if you speak now. So can we wait until the public hearing and then we'll put you all on record on it?
Sure.
Is that okay?
Good, yes, I'll be here.
I'm sorry, I don't, I just don't want you to.
No problem.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else online with comments, we'll make sure you speak again, Mr. Ingram, when we get to that public hearing. Um.
Nobody else online.
Okay, and down here, Mr. Frederick, just need your municipality for the record.
Yeah, Tony's private, Flemington Borough.
Just shoot that, you can sit, you can sit.
Tony's private, Flemington Borough, North Main Street. I had to come to this meeting, I've been absent for quite a while. I guess in the heyday of the preservationists and the hotel battle. It was one of my last really string of meetings, and then of course we had the pandemic and things went downhill from there. However, I'm here. And basically, I have a few, a few items that I wanna talk about. One of the main reasons I'm here is because I heard Flemington was going to pot, so I had to come here.
They're pun, unintended.
I say, anyway, we'll see what, we'll see what the fruits of theirs, but anyway. Starting locally in my neighborhood, trench receptacles used to be here or there, along Worth Main Street, my end. They were removed about a year and a half ago, I don't know what happened to them, but. Because of the frequency of people running up and down from Steve's store, there's a lot of debris and stuff on my property and my neighbors. I'd like to see them reinstalled, I guess they were on the telephone poles or whatever, but. Yeah, my wall makes a nice spot to throw stuff over, anyway. Going from there, Hopewell Avenue there. What's going on with that street?
You wanna explain the budget?
No, I mean physically, what's going on with the street?
So it's under reconstruction?
Well, the thing is this, you know, I travel frequently in a rural market, Mike. You did what you had to do and machines were, you know, doing their thing week by week, but. I mean, you don't even have a, you know, travel at your own risk sign on that street, I mean, it's, it's, it's. It's hard on a vehicle, I mean, it's unbelievably tough if you're a local person like me.
Took a break for the month of March because of the weather and.
Well, I would, I would say assign travel at your own risk because you could lose a ball joint there, you could, I mean, you bottom out, you. It's terrible, even think that people are gonna go up and down that street with a motor vehicle, I mean, something along the lines of, you can't close the street. Avoid it, you know, if you can, but I, I, you know, I try to use it, I don't know about anybody.
The DPW needs tomorrow morning, so.
But basically, well, like I said, it's, it's the ugliest thing you wanna travel on right now besides South Main Street. So anyway, we got that, what's going on with the, let's say the. The project on Hopewell Ferran, that building that was supposed to be going up there.
Where, where the, where the old store was?
Yeah, Global Act, right there, between Hopewell and Ferran Boulevard, what, what, when are we gonna see something built there?
They don't have a pilot in place and.
Okay, we're done, we're done.
Okay.
Okay, now, what basically is going on with that humongous sign of the circle? You know, or, I mean, what is that sign? I mean, digitally, there was something, something digitally being done there.
The digital part is, is in China being built or something like that, but.
So, this was, this was a, a temporary measure, just to put something there because it was built. So, so we put something there, it just isn't, the actual digital. Piece is coming in May, so they're hoping to have it all of, and build by the end of May. They did redo the flowers, the plants, because it, there was something with our water. That, with the soil or something like that.
It was installed from all.
Yeah, something was with the road and all that, so they did a replant, they redid everything, and so that's coming up in, you know, during the spring, so. It's almost done, almost done.
Now, the sign itself, what did it say?
Welcome to Flemington.
Yeah, I remember back in the day when they were discussing the digital part of the signs there being a hazard to. To the people coming in and out of the circle, or a couple of meetings with that, and I guess everybody gave their okay with the DOT.
I wasn't here.
The engineers, anyway, that's what they did. And I remember I recommended that basically in the interest of, I guess. You know, Flemington Raritan community, that the sign would say Flemington Raritan welcomes you. I was pretty much whatever up on what was going on there, but when I saw the size of the sign, the humongous size of the sign. And for the fact that, you know, Flemington. You know, I mean, to me, it's ostentatious, I'm gonna be honest with you, it's ostentatious. I would suggest, like, kind of.
Well.
Just going with something a little less.
So you realize the borough does not have nothing to do with that, right?
Well, again, maybe it can now, based on the fact that when you pull up there, you think, what am I, in the Hollywood Hills, Hollywood sign? Yeah, no, really.
That's a good analogy, but, but at, at the end of the day, this is not a borough project at all, we, we have nothing to do with it. What it is, is that they came back and said, listen, we wanna do something as an interim because it's such an eyesore, because it's only gonna be there for a month.
I get that.
So, once the month is gone, that sign comes down and it's just this, the digital screen.
Also, the sign is coming down.
Oh, yeah, it's very temporary.
Not the welcome to Flemington.
The welcome to Flemington.
It'll be all, it'll be all, yeah.
Say that again.
Say that again.
Between what you're saying.
When you're looking at the sign, are you talking about the welcome to historic?
Yeah, the huge thing.
On the left-hand side, that's.
And then. Another thing. With this project that's going on with Hopewell Ferran, the Neil Camp property, you know, down the road. What, what's gonna happen with Steve's store, the other element of the golden triangle, if I call it? What, what's gonna happen there, because back in the day, when there was discussion about areas of redevelopment. That store was seriously considered to be part, will become a area of redevelopment in itself. And it was, you know, there was, wasn't really contentious, there were a lot of people that said, hey, why don't we include it? Because when you do put up, whatever you're putting up in the other areas of that triangle there, as I call it. Steve doesn't really fit in, you know, I, I still say to this day, Steve fits in up by the apartments. You have then people with the trapes up and down, winter, summer pedestrians, baby carriages, crosswalks, near misses, you know.
I can speak to that.
Yeah.
Myself and Mary Melfi were on the planning board at the time, and we both recommended that not only Steve's store. But parcels up and down to the north park where the, the office condos are. Would also be included, included in the entire area need of redevelopment. And the council at the time denied our recommendations, so the size of the area need of redevelopment is exactly what the council had approved way back when. Mayor Edwards was mayor.
Yeah, well, that was then, this was now, I just remember one councilman who sort of fell in disgrace. He basically said, well, there's an existing business here now, we don't wanna like, you know, hurt anybody's feelings or whatnot. I mean, that was the only, you know, thing against it, but like I say, that, that was then, this is now. And I'm telling you right now, that store does not fit, and I'd rather see a dog park there, ice creams. You know, ju-just green, you can name it after whatever politician you want, you know, anybody. But like I said, that in itself would put a little green, would put a little ring. In that area because it's useless for anything else, I mean, it's just a small triangle track.
That's certainly up to the council if they want to expand the area need of redevelopment, that's what you're proposing.
Main Street, we have a couple of flagpoles here, we have one at the county building, right, we have one down by the monument. And then there's this sickening, ugly. Flagpole, it's rusting and, you know which one I'm talking about?
Post office?
Well, I, I'd say it's more like in front of the consignment shop. I've been working. With the owners of that property, not the postal office, the owners of the property who owns the pole, which happens to be in front of, you know, the post office, but. What are we gonna do about that, because George up there would be like. Shocked to see what's up there hanging right now, it's a permanent half-staff, it's been like that for almost a year, it's shredded. There's a POW MIA flag just below it that's just hanging there, and this is all attached staff. Now, I've approached the owners of the property, and believe me, I approached them at every angle. And they don't seem to care. Now, I worked for the post office. And because of what's been going on there year in and year out. I installed with permission from our post, that's your two flags on the entrance of the post office itself. MIA flag and an American flag, and I maintain them, keep them in good shape, do the half-staff maneuvers when we have to. But before the end of this week, I want either the borough. Or DeSappio or somebody, go in there with a bucket truck. And just cut that old clothesline of a hawyer down and take those two flags down.
Somebody did it, you could do as a donation. I know I saw, somebody had posted something about this on Facebook.
Oh, it's all.
Rebecca Newman had responded that she's been trying to work with the property owner to get the flag replaced. So, and I know she's out of town for the next couple of days, so we can follow up with Rebecca and as far as she's gotten in touch with the. Property owner and see what kind of headway she's made with it, when she gets back.
Well, again. There's a borough and bucket truck.
Yeah, but it's private property.
No, no.
Yes, it is, you can't go on private property.
Again, that flag, you can go on private property. I had permission, if I had a ladder high enough, to take it down, unfortunately, I'm not gonna risk my life for, you know, a crusty, rusty old pole. But this borough, it's on Main Street. And the number of complaints that we've received by phone or online, et cetera, et cetera, that flag should be down before the end of the week. I'll pay you for it, and you can reimburse me, but I'm telling you right now, this has been over two years, okay? Those guys hung the flag up there. Okay? And it's been up there now shredded, okay? If they had any patriotism in their blood, my father served in World War Two. My uncle died at the Battle of La Bouch, my cousin served in Vietnam, okay? I just hit it lucky, I'm not a vet, but I'm telling you right now, don't, don't dribble over. Private property or this, this or that, is it postal property, is it DeSappio's property? It's the borough's disgrace to have that flag on Main Street looking like that for over two years. And I'm sorry that I'm a little bit adamant, almost aggravated about it, but I know what I went through. I know what, you know, I know who I talk to, and like I said. You give me a bucket truck, I'll go up there and I'll just strip it all down, and then you have nothing there. Which is fine and dandy, if you're not gonna maintain it, if you're not loyal enough, patriotic enough in this country. To have something like that hanging on Main Street for over six, seven months now, well then. You know, you got no business being on Main Street. And like I said, by the end of this week, I don't care how you do it. That flag, that MIA flag, that clothesline of a rope that's jammed, you can't even pull the flag up and down, that's gotta go, okay? That's gotta go.
Do you have anything else?
Yeah. I have something else.
What else you're, what else? Liz, do you wanna look into that on a property maintenance issue, maybe Dave can.
I can ask Dave about it, I'll ask him, yeah.
Thank you.
On more positive note. In this last month, New Jersey Magazine, I don't know if anybody saw it, there was an article in there about the Lindbergh. Situation, the Lindbergh trial, the fact that he was found guilty. And I would ask anybody there, if they hadn't seen it, to go online, get a copy of the magazine. And in it, they explore an idea whereby the Lindbergh trial and all the artifacts, all the evidence would be looked at forensically. From, let's say, DNA analysis of the stamps that were lit, et cetera, et cetera. There are two people, an archivist and an associate of hers, that have been gathering. You know, what they need to do, went down the trench to the barracks, looked at some of the evidence, and they actually went to court. Because it's all, I guess it's all public record, to basically take all that evidence. Use forensic, modern forensic DNA analysis on some of the evidence. To basically see. If Lindbergh was the man or not. I, I, I thought that was just tremendous of interest to me, because I still think. He's as innocent as OJ was guilty. As a matter, you know, and I said this before.
Who is innocent?
I think, I think, uh, Topman is innocent as OJ was guilty, but anyway. If you wanna look at that, a judge threw their request out. To say, nah, we don't, I'll just say this, it, it sat poorly with me, the way the judge worded, you know, knocking it down, but it's on appeal. And I hope they win the appeal because, I'll tell you what, if the curse could be reversed, I'm a happy Flemington resident.
Finally. I don't wanna belabor anything, but the state please return the lock of hair they had from the found baby's body. To the Lindberghs after both parents died and the Lindbergh family destroyed the hair lock, so we'll never know. Whether that baby was a Lindbergh or not, so that's just a desire to really get your blood boiling, moving on to your agenda now. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes? Julie, I'll second. Uh, I have a roll call, please.
Mr. Engelhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yeah.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Ingram, can you read the titles of the consent agenda, please?
Does anyone?
Read the titles first, and then we can see if they're removed.
Okay, resolution twenty-two-three dash seventy-eight, supporting the borough of Flemington to become a revolution NJ community. Resolution twenty-two-three dash seventy-nine. Authorizing the Sustainable Jersey Grant application for the twenty-two-three Sustainable Jersey Grants Program. Funded by PSEG Foundation in the amount of two thousand dollars. Resolution twenty-two-three dash eighty-three, supporting the application of the YMCA of Bucks and Hundred and County. For federal grant money for the Flemington Raritan Community Pool. And resolution twenty-two-three dash eighty-four, authorizing the partial closing of Stengel Road from four PM to ten PM for salsa.
Does anybody want any of these removed from the consent? Hearing that, can I have a motion to approve?
Engelhardt moves.
Julie, I'll second. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Engelhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
Pass.
Do we know when Salsa Night is?
Yes.
It is December twenty-third. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Black. All right, regular agenda. Uh, we have a number of public hearings tonight. Uh, the first one is ordinance twenty-three dash two, good night, Mr. Kane, requiring local cannabis establishment and clarifying section twenty-six oh nine point one of the Borough Code regarding limitation on the number of cannabis cultivators and retailers permitted in the borough. I am opening this public hearing to the public.
We need to vote though.
Jillian move to open.
I'm a second.
Uh, on favor?
Aye.
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 Um, okay, uh, we are now open to the public. Mrs. Stewart, you have any comments or questions?
I just wanted to know exactly where, how many we're going to have and where they're going to be.
So we're allowing two establishments and up to four licenses. So there could be a medicinal and a retail in two locations. Uh, if somebody doesn't wanna open up a second, I believe that's correct, right?
We only get two locations, but they can have two things in each one, or they can have one thing.
Yeah, they're called hybrids. So you could, it could be medicinal, it can be retail, or it could be a combination of both. But there are only two locations on that sort of retail side.
What are the locations?
Well, then, there's only one that's been set up now.
That's Mrs. Ma.
Right, we set up um, uh, in um, the next ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh four is a further definition of where they can be.
Okay, wait, we'll wait on that one. Okay. Anything else, Mrs. Stewart?
No.
Okay, anybody else from the public here live or online? Okay, we now, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Jillian move.
Johnson, second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, for public hearing ordinance, uh, twenty twenty-three dash oh two and ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh four, I'm accusing myself.
He closes the public hearing, Chris, is that okay? You voted to close the public hearing, is that okay? You're accusing yourself?
It's procedural. I don't, I wouldn't be doing. I mean, you're, if you're uncomfortable, you can, but I, giving you, yeah, it's procedural, it's procedural.
Okay. All right, can I have a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three oh two?
Jillian move.
Okay.
Long was second.
Uh, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Singleheart?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
It's okay, I'm reading your lips now.
You can also give us a high sign, but you know. All right, uh, the second one is public hearing ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh four, amending the code of the Borough of Flemington to repeal or amend locations within certain districts for cannabis retailers and cannabis cultivators. I'm uh, I have a motion to open to public.
Jillian move.
Long was second.
All favor?
Aye.
This, I, hearing is now open. Any members of the public uh, here in live? Miss, Miss Stewart?
Where, where are the, what zones are they gonna be? I know there's one in the, in the.
So right, so yeah, so so this is removing, allowing them in the downtown one and two business districts and removing them from the village, village artisan district, which is the Stengel Central Avenue area. It's leaving them out of the highways where they were already permitted, but they were also already permitted downtown business one and two uh, as well as the village district, removing them from there.
So I'm, they'll be on the highway.
Any other question, comments for the public? Anybody online?
There's no one online, behind here.
See, nobody else? Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Jillian move.
Long was second.
Uh, all favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-three, twenty twenty-three dash four?
Jillian move.
On the second.
Can I have a roll call, please? Oh, sorry, any discussion?
Um, I think it, I think it would be prudent for me to or, and if, and you were there too, uh, Mayor Caro, but I think it would be prudent for the council to hear the planning board's comments on this ordinance.
Well, there's no discussion. I mean, if nobody's got any questions, I don't think we really need to have a discussion, uh, uh, something that nobody's asked.
Well, then I would like to make a comment and summarize what the planning board's recommendations were on this. Um, you know, we had a, a, a long discussion on this issue and um, the planning board looked at this multiple ways. There was a lot of conversation, a lot of concern about um, parking or limited parking in um, the downtown uh, DB, DB two and VAS. There was that talk, but there was also a lot of concern about um, whether this ordinance is um, uh, it shows consistency with the master plan. And that's what the planning board is essentially charged with when they are reviewing any ordinance. So I want to make it clear as to what the planning board recommended or didn't recommend. Essentially, the, the majority of the planning board, um, with the exception of myself, the mayor and Mr. Semino, all felt that this ordinance was substantially inconsistent with the master plan. And what that means in planning board terms is that they felt overall that taking these, this use out of the VAS, the DB and the DB two was not necessarily in the spirit of the current master plan. Now, please keep in mind, the current master plan uses SIC codes, which are not necessarily something that we really wanna use in the future. So please take that with a grain of salt. That being said, they felt that the, the majority of the planning board um, felt that the, that the master plan goal number three, which states that the borough should strive to employ strategies to encourage community and economic development therein, um, was not met. Um, the ordinance was substantially inconsistent in that regard. Um, it also, the planning board, as the majority of the planning board felt that master plan goal number eleven, um, uh, felt that the borough, that states that the borough should strive to concentrate retail service and entertainment uses in the downtown and removing a specific retail um, use such as cannabis is essentially against, against uh, the spirit in the master plan. I'm like, I recommend that you take that with a grain of salt, but um, that's my opinion, not the planning boards, or the majority of the planning boards. The, 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 one of the most important things was um, that I think Chris, I think needs to kind of consider this. Um, because uh, from what Cara explained to me, this is the one where she's a little concerned that there might be the need to um, consider whether there is um, a a recommendation to substantially change this or not. So this is the one I'm gonna read, you know, word for word. Um, she wrote, the ordinance indicates in numerous places that primary access should be from a state county, state or county roadway. However, testimony was provided that there are either no county roadways within the borough or a minimal amount of, of, of the same point one seven weeks. If council intended for permitted primary access to include Walter Fran Boulevard or similar roadways, it should consider amending this language. And they specifically have said, um, they recommended in the language of the ordinance to add the words um, a minimum of one or more, whenever there was the words um, uh, highway access in the, in the ordinance, it's repeated multiple times. Um, they thought that would make the verbiage clearer. If you wanted me to make sure that I pointed out to you that, that could be considered. Again, I think that's something you need to advise us on, if it uh, makes that ordinance uh, significantly different or not. And in addition, the council could consider amending the ordinance language regarding primary access to state that one or more points of access shall be from a state or county roadway in order to enable the use of multiple access points and as and if necessary. So I think those last two are more just verbiage, but I did wanna, I did wanna clarify that. Although Mayor, myself and one of the planning board member didn't necessarily agree, the majority of the, of the planning board did not uh, believe this was in the spirit of the.
The traffic engineer for the planning board testified
You're right.
that the accesses were fine for all of our.
Yes, and I was about to say that, so thank you for, for, for picking back on that. Um, that was another thing that Cara wanted me to bring up was the, the, the traffic engineer did, you know, the, the testimony. So uh, so with that, maybe during.
Prime of primary access, which some members layman on the planning board questioned what primary meant. And the traffic engineer gave the definition under traffic, the primary did not necessarily land right onto highway. He was totally fine with ordinance.
Yeah, I, like I said, I, myself and the mayor and one other member did vote for this. Um, the other members voted against. And I just wanted to make sure that, um, specifically that language may need to be clarified a bit.
Can I just ask a quick question regarding the master plan? Isn't it just the guideline?
It is.
It's not.
Yeah, correct.
So.
It's correct.
We are voting on if it is um, uh, not.
But how can you have something that's just the guideline?
This is just their recommendation. They have zero say on what's covered by the does under this, under this current situation.
They're just saying they feel it is substantially inconsistent. And I wanted to make sure that before the board voted on something that they did, they were aware of it. Cause that's my responsibility to, to make sure that message gets through, whether I agree with it or not. In this case, I didn't. But I wanna make sure that the, the, you know, that this council has all the information that they need before they vote.
Well, thank you for bringing their concerns to our attention.
I have a question. Um, so these districts that we are uh, limiting by restricting it to these highway accesses, um, is that similar to um, rules regarding like uh, liquor stores? Like that's the, the biggest analogy I could think of, right? So are those allowed in the downtown business districts or not?
Yes, they are. I think the difference in this conversation, we have that exact conversation at the planning board. And with SIC codes, as you know, there are specific um, uh, you know, identifier numbers for different types of uh, retail services. And the way our ordinance is works now, it, those types of um, retail services are identified by an individual code. And the, I think the discussion went to is I think the majority, and I mean, you can, you can correct me if you, if you got the, a different impression, Marsha, but I, I got the impression that the majority of my colleagues on the planning force agreed that um, this use while many unknown and new and a little um, scary, maybe for some people, I need to recognize that. Um, uh, is essentially similar to a liquor store, like you asked. But perhaps in, and, and one of the things that we stressed was that this can be amended at any time. And I think that was the point, was that um, if, if it's not kind of the equal in people's minds in the general public right now, very well maybe in a couple of years. So some of the people on the planning board felt like, you know what, let's let it cook for a year or two, a three or four. Yeah, let's see how, how this new um, uh, retail service goes in other parts of the uh, borough, um, and maybe hold off on areas that, and, and this was my personal concern. Um, I felt that there was too many residential um, in DB and DB two specifically. And I think Marsha would agree with that. There's a large amount of residential. And if we are making a point to keep it out of single family and other, and multifamily districts, I, I felt like it was an injustice to those who happened to just have apartment or home being one of those other three um, uh, zones to not have that same kind of protection and recognition. Um, so that was my argument for uh, seeing it as um, uh, substantially uh, we're not substantially inconsistent. I know that's a double negative, but that's the term we use. Um, but like I said, other people disagree.
One of the biggest issues was the testimony by the traffic engineer that um, these locations have a larger car usage and parking need than in a very busy restaurant. And this town has gotten rid of parking minimums and that the downtown business one and two area and the VAS area just doesn't have the parking ability and the stopping ability at this point because it is new and there's a very, very hard, high usage. One of the planning board members looked it up online and found that uh, a recent traffic study in another state said that the use of cars for cannabis locations is fifteen times greater than any restaurant. So it was a very big concern. So um, like, as, as the council would say, we can go back and visit it anytime we want, um.
And I hope we do. I mean, I, I don't think, I, I don't necessarily think that um, this use is something that um, should be banned forever and all eternal from the VAS, the DB and the DB two. But I, I personally believe that um, we need to walk into this um, uh, uh, relatively new retail opportunity.
Um, again, you know, the Marius location having a very large parking area with very good circulation and that, that was one of the reasons why I had so much confidence by the planning board to begin with. So uh, is there any other discussion? We have a motion in the second on the table. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Singleheart?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti? So your lips, Ms. Still?
Yes.
It passed.
Thank you. All right, the next public hearing is ordinance twenty twenty-three eight, amending chapter seven traffic scheduled well parking restricted for use by handicapped persons by removing these five line cap industry. Uh, can I motion to open the public hearing?
Jillian move.
Long was second.
Uh, all favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now open. Is Mr. Ingram still on the line?
He's still here on, on.
Uh, Mr. Ingram, I immediately turning this on to you as soon as you get on, uh, since I cut you off um, during the public comments. So now you can go on the record and uh, or, or the twenty-three. Except getting yourself up to you.
Uh, yeah, thanks so much for taking the time to review this. Um, I just wanted to say that um, yeah, it is, it's, it's very important for us to be able to park in front of our house. Parking's become, especially in the summer when people are visiting town, going to events and things, it's hard to park in, in front of the home. There are ten capener, twelve capener, ten capener is a three unit house with four adults um, that all have cars. And me and my wife live here. She's a teacher at Rutgers. She teaches night classes. She gets home fairly late. Um, and there are people that do occupy the four spots in front of our house that live on Park Avenue that also have driveways and fourteen capener has driveways. The handicap spot is in front of fourteen Capener Street, um, and the resident that requested it doesn't live there. So thank you for taking the time to address it. Um, and one thing I'd like to consider is ten and twelve capener, like I said, do not have driveways and there is no dedicated parking. And all residents in Flemington Borough get the same permits and there is no resident parking specifically for ten or twelve capener. So we're fighting for spots for with everybody that lives on Park Avenue that wants to store their cars on Capener Street, which is get, becoming a problem and courthouse employees that use the spots and things. So, um, but thank you. That's all.
Thank you for that information, Mr. Ingram. Anybody else on this ordinance for the public hearing? Online or in person?
There's nobody online here.
Okay. Seeing none, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Jillian move.
Uh, all favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-three oh eight?
Jillian move.
Long was second.
Okay, any discussion? Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Singleheart?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Long.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti. Ms. Tilly.
Yes.
Thank you, uh, the next public hearing is what ordinance twenty twenty-three oh nine, amending chapter eleven, utility section eleven dash one point one regulations to modify the water service unit. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Till you a second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Public hearing is now open, anybody from the public here live or online, Miss Stewart?
No, Mr. Frank in borough, can somebody explain what this is about?
Um.
I was gonna say, uh, redefining the, um, estimated water to three hundred gallons per unit, if you look at your water bill, you're building units, each unit equals three hundred gallons.
What was it?
Per day.
What was it before?
It was, I think it was three hundred, they were just, I think they just were consolidating that and revisited it, and made sure they were accurate.
It's not going to affect anybody's water rate.
It should not, no, water rate is not going up this year. Here's your good news for the budget. Anybody else? Questions from the public? Seeing none, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Till you a second.
All in favor? Ordinance twenty twenty-three oh nine.
Till you a move.
Uh, any discussion? Roll call, please.
The same guard.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Long.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti.
Yes.
Ms. Tilly.
Yes.
Pass.
Thank you, the next one is public hearing for ordinance twenty twenty-three dash ten, amending chapter ten of municipal code federal streets and sidewalks to update road opening requirements. Uh, this ensures that the road integrity, if somebody opens up a road, uh, it, once we do work on a road, it can't be opened for eight years, um, once we finish paving a new road. Uh, and I have a motion to open to the public.
Till you a move.
All in favor? Public hearing, no, the public, Miss Stewart.
That was Stewart, uh, I would like to have it say opening and closing requirements, because with this gas project that's going on in the borough right now, there are places where they are replacing concrete sidewalk with black.
They will go back to regular sidewalks when they're done, till we be doing all of them.
They will, maybe.
Absolutely, you asked me about that two weeks ago, and I got to get back to you about it, but I did check.
They can't pour concrete sidewalks in the winter, so the, the plants aren't open, so those, what you're seeing is the temporary cap.
Well, some, you know, I just know, they look so tacky.
I do.
Well, that speak, that loose gravel is the temporary patches.
No, it's black.
It's temporary gravel.
This had, that, this had nothing to do with that, this is actually when a road is done, and then somebody like, uh, losing the town gas wants to come back to do some kind of fix, they can't for eight years. When we, when public taxpayer dollars from Flemington Borough do erode, it's done for eight years, can't be touched.
Okay.
But, under emergency.
Under emergency only.
But.
And then it has to be fixed to a certain standard, that's what this is about.
And then why Spring Street that hasn't been that long since Spring Street on the other block was done, and they have a black.
Because we didn't have this ordinance in place.
They could come back.
This is gonna prevent when we do a new, when we do a, like Dewey was just done, nobody's gonna be able to touch Dewey, once we pass this ordinance.
Okay, but that was not a condition prior to this.
Correct.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Till you a move.
Is there a second? All in favor? Can I have a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash ten?
Angle heart moves.
Till you a second.
Uh, any discussion?
I, I have, I have a clarification, so we're just addressing the streets, what of should this also address, um, the sidewalks?
Sidewalks too, yeah, right, once they're done, once they're done. New, fresh, clean, shiny.
But this just says recently paved streets. I mean, like it reiterates just the, the street, when the street.
When you're talking about, you're talking about the, the, uh, disturbing of it again.
Correct.
That part, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but the sidewalks are limited public, private property, right, you're responsible for your sidewalk, so if you need to do something inside of it, like if a tree is lifting it up or something like that, you're responsible to fix it, the street is ours.
It's yours.
Owls, nobody's allowed to touch our street ever, the liability, the sidewalks are under the responsibility of the property owner that faces the streets.
Thank you for clarifying.
Then why would the sidewalks be included in the title?
I don't know. Because that's the title of the, that's the title of the section, it's not the title, it's titled the municipal code cover streets and sidewalks, we're only covering one specific part of that chapter, got it? Uh, roll call, please.
The same guard.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Long.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti. Ms. Tilly.
Yes.
Pass.
Thank you, public hearing ordinance twenty twenty-three eleven, grant renewal of municipal consent to contest a central New Jersey and act operate and maintain a camera communication system in the borough of Flemington, Hunter County, New Jersey. This is providing a new contract, uh, that will give us a ten thousand dollar contract amount upfront. Um, can I have a motion to open to the public?
Till you a move.
All in favor? The public, any comments or questions from the public?
Where Stewart going to be filled?
No, it's here.
Oh, it's here.
They're just giving us money, it's a good thing, and yes, we already accounted for it in the budget.
But where is the, where is the, where is this?
It's, it's your cable lines.
I know, but where is it, where is it says to construct?
Next page, turn to next page.
Yes, I've written, communication system, they're gonna construct something.
It's, no, it's the renewal of the consent agreement to allow them to do, to operate now.
They're not gonna be doing anything.
No, no, the original consent was for them to construct it, but now it's the operate and maintain part.
Funny, why I like to know how we can provide some competition to that.
Right, that's why they're giving us the money, so.
So that, that.
There is no way we can.
Your paintings can suffer, your, your television.
Um.
Well, there's no competition in cable, cables dying out, people are going to internet streaming, so.
So I won't be able to get the.
Said you, I like that.
Never said that we're done same day.
Um, okay, can I, can I have a motion to close the public hearing? All in favor?
I.
A motion to adopt.
Till you a move.
No second.
I'm second.
Uh, any discussion? Mr. Parker, will you give me lessons on how to save money?
Yes, I will.
And just to clarify.
And I'm gonna get Chris to come with.
No.
Well, one good thing, uh, we're gonna be able to slightly get a free television cable feed downstairs.
That's good.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, uh. I roll call, please.
Ms. Engelhardt. Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Long.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti.
Yes.
Ms. Tilly.
Yes.
Pass.
Thank you, alright, we have introduction to ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twelve, amending chapter four licensing general section four dash three retail food establishments of section four dash three point two fees of the municipal code of the borough of Flemington, the entities except for temporary retail food establishments. This is the, uh, the one that the slacks testified on earlier, uh, this is an introduction, it is not a public hearing. Um, that will be, this passes tonight in two weeks. Uh, is there a motion to introduce?
Till you a move.
Angle heart a second.
Thank you, roll call, please.
Ms. Engelhardt.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Long.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti. Ms. Tilly.
Yes.
Thank you. The public will be heard on, the public hearing will be March twenty-seventh, the slacks, and, uh, you're welcome, thank you. Uh, next is resolution twenty twenty-three dash eighty, operating vacation pay for former Flemington police officer Daniel Lookner. Uh, can I have a motion, please?
Till you a move.
Any discussion on this? The guy just, yes, he left us abruptly.
Yeah.
That's, yeah, that's.
And it's paid at the hours, uh, at the rate that it's earned.
Yeah, okay.
It's not. That is for that, yes, can I have a roll call, please?
The same guard.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Long.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti. Ms. Tilly.
Yeah.
I saw, I saw it.
Okay, resol, thank you, resolution twenty twenty-three dash eighty-one, agreement with the borough of Flemington and attached for Raritan for a shared municipal court, um, this is entering into an agreement with the borough township uh, for the next three years to share court with them, um, we're already using the same prosecutor. Um, and this will take effect in, I'm sorry, Mr. Boston.
Thank you, there, um, resolution twenty twenty-three dash eighty-one, excuse myself.
Okay, thank you, um, can I have a motion to approve?
Till you a move.
Is there a second?
I'll go second.
Uh, any discussion, as I said earlier, this is gonna save the borough about twenty-five thousand dollars in year, for year for the next three years.
Does that, that savings also include the savings of the employees, like health insurance and stuff?
It's all inclusive, yes, all inclusive, including, um, we will, other than testifying uh, at cases, um, there even covering, uh, having the, an officer in the court, so we won't have to be supplying officer in the court. That will also save some money and put an officer out on the road. Anybody else question? Okay, roll call, please.
The same guard.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Long.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti. Ms. Tilly.
Yes.
Thank you, um, we're now moving into a work session.
I know, we have two more.
I end at nine.
Do we have anymore?
Nope, we're good, that was my.
Okay, don't scare me like that, no session, discussion regarding cannabis business license applications. Think Mr. Johnson's just gonna hang out, uh, out of the audience, um. I, I'm hoping this isn't gonna be a lengthy conversation, because we still have an executive session.
No, it should be very short.
Okay, so go ahead.
Oh, okay, so, um, it, now that the ordinances have been passed, um, we have received no less than now seventy phone calls and emails from organizations, most of whom have already been approved by the state uh, and for conditional license, who are interested in uh, an area, several have already have conditional leases or conditional, uh, uh, it's all conditional leases, no one's within the buyer property. Uh, if you're interested, uh, you know, it includes the former desk, uh, Lennox Outlet area. The former, what was it, thirty-five burgers, whatever, which was the pizza. Twenty-five burgers, um, the, uh,
Friday.
Fridays, and, uh, oh, and, uh, people Fridays.
Field Fridays.
Yeah, yeah, so, those have been, those have been, uh, um, there was a discussion today from McGraw that we had given the second letter, uh, letter, uh, uh, vote of support for, um, they're not exactly happy that we're going into the application process, but I encourage them to.
Oh, wow.
And, well, the problem is they have not secured a conditional lease or lease, or anything like that, and since November twenty-eighth is when we voted for them, you voted for them uh, for a, uh, for support to the state, um, and, uh, there has been no report back.
Over three months.
Yes, over three months, so I've encouraged them that they can be part of this process. Um, if they decide to come in, uh, I, I told them that they could petition you folks to waive the application fee if you wanted to, that's up to you. Now, the application fee itself is, this is, um, um, this is three different municipalities, including Fleming. We put in here, um, process to, uh, make sure we have enough information uh, that applications can be vetted. Um, those, you can, you can score them, and then that information can be sent to the planning board for them to, uh, to review any of these applications. Um, it's fair that we put a deadline for the applications, um, so that we get as many coming in as possible, this is a non-refundable application fee. Um, so we'll know who's serious when they come in, and then it actually has an approval date, so people have an expectation of, uh, when we would, what the, the council would say yes or no.
So what do you want for this, what, from this body?
I just want to know if you have any problems with this, if you have any concerns, if there's anything you want to add. Um, this is not something that needs a resolution, but I think, uh, council should have the ability to weigh in.
Do you need, uh, do you want an answer tonight, do you wanna wait, can you wait until the twenty-seventh of March? What is your?
I'll do anything the council wants, yeah.
I, I just have one thing off my, I had this, um, without, you know, since we got it tonight, I, I didn't have a chance to read it, but just please, uh, after looking through the deadlines versus, we don't wanna have to go back and forth between the planning board and here, just please take a look at the planning board's calendar and make sure that we're not, you know, we've got enough time to pass it down, pass it back up and get your deadline in.
Well, the, the plan was to have this in your hands on Friday, uh, it's been in the hands of several people at the planning board and asked for comments back, but I, I'm, I'm sure the schedule's, uh, in the way, so that's why maybe, um, we, we give this a couple of weeks and push these, push the deadlines back.
It's possible they might want to talk about it.
Yeah, so, so I'm gonna tie up and then to look at it, because I wanna make sure that they have a, a, uh, point of entry into this application process that they could.
And Michael, did I hear you correctly that they are, the people are already approved for medical marijuana?
I can only say that the majority I've talked to have been, uh, pre-approved by the state.
By the state, so they would have been on that list we had received months ago regarding at the last time that we approved Anne Mary's, remember there was a list that they.
That was before my time.
That was, oh, okay. So you don't need anything from us tonight?
Yes.
We need comments back from the planning board.
Yeah, comments back to the planning board.
And then do we need to approve this, or just give you a, I don't think you have to approve it, it's an application.
No.
You just communicated to the.
Alright, so, um, any concerns you have with this, please, uh, let the administrator know, uh, prior to, uh, the March twenty-seven meeting, and, and then he'll send it out following, while comments coming in, however you guys can adjust it.
So, can I just have a question on the process that it has to go to the planning board? Their comments, can we get them in letter form, and then this one we can get emailed them prior to the twenty-seventh? Susan, is that something we can do?
Certainly ask for that.
Okay.
Well, the, um, the comments that I did, uh, talk with Mr. Dashon about was that, uh, we would make sure that they're confirmed to be in a zone, but we don't wanna go through a planning board process twice, that's what they were really looking through. Is that, um, wanna be able to vet to make sure that they have a design, but they don't have to have an architectural design, anything that costs some serious money, until we've said, okay, you're, you're the number one or number two choice, and then they can go through the planning board. But I wanna confirm that.
Yeah, effectively, you know, we have a, a pretty long checklist, that's most of which is kind of required by law, we, we, we issue uh, waivers to that checklist, especially for smaller projects. Um, so I think the concern that the board had was, we don't want applicants to have to go through this twice. So we wanna try to keep it as streamlined as possible.
Yeah, I don't think.
And that's the comments they'll probably get back from the letter.
Yeah, I don't think council wants them to go through it twice either.
Now, there is, the property owners feel they have a clock, and they would like to close, they would like to get people in there.
First time is money.
The reason why we've been waiting is because we're waiting to see how these two ordinance is going through first, right?
Yeah, we couldn't do this.
We couldn't do this before this point, so.
Right, so the plan is that if, um, if, if we're good with putting an application up, we'll put it up on the website. Um, um, and as people call, let people know that this will be up on the website within the next ten to fourteen days. Um, and they're to look for it, and they're to make the application, we're not spending any money, do, there should be more than enough people who want to apply.
Okay, anything else? Alright, thank you, alright, we're now moving up to public comment session number two, anybody, Miss Stewart?
I just was wondering, it's brought a question to my mind, is Flemington going to have any rowing sites?
So you're.
About medical, I've talked about recreational.
The ordinance that was adopted two years ago. The ordinance that was adopted two years ago, or three years ago, whenever it was, does permit. Uh, cultivation sites, but are, we only allow, um, two locations, so. So if two medicinal come in, there is no place for a cultivation site.
And if I can jump in on that, so, most cultivators are looking for a minimum of sixty thousand square feet. And, uh, I've talked to them, uh, as much as a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty thousand square feet. Um, we have no such facilities here, uh, they would be lucky if, if they moved it to Rite Aid, that they would get it in five thousand square feet.
That's when I heard somebody told me that Rite Aid was, might become a growing site, and that we're concerned about the owner.
Um. It's, it's possible that somebody can make an application, applications, uh, it, whoever involved with the application process. In approving it, can approve or disapprove of any application.
So the likelihood of Flemington having a growing site is?
It's pretty small, because most of the interest is in having medicinal sites, uh, with recreation. So. You know, the growing sites are mostly being looked at in South Jersey, where they, where there's large lots, where they can put up greenhouses and whatever.
Thank you.
You're welcome, anything else, anybody else for the public session? Mister Craig.
Yes, uh. I wanna apologize if I had somewhere in my breath of prospering with that flag situation, I didn't deal with that.
Funny, I'm sorry, if you could just step up, the folks online may be able to hear you.
It's, you know, the better part of two years, I've sort of been to train to like. Up the post office, rattle, although, like I said, there were Palmer's that concerned the post office. And I've been dealing with, you know, with the Sapios. And, uh, basically, I mean, my feeling is, yeah, that polls on private property, but it's in public.
We'll see what we can do about it, I appreciate your patriotism and, you know. I, uh, one of the few people who actually read the flag law, federal flag law, so we'll see what we can do about it.
I appreciate that, uh, the only other thing, uh, brings to mind when I hear about, you know, uh, sharing courts, saving money. I guess there are a couple of people here, when I was on the merger. Kick, you know, the tale of two tigers, the book, you haven't gotten the book or read it, you should read it, but here we are. You know, playing the hurricane pool, sharing courts. Uh. It's no brainer.
I don't want us.
Now, you might resist it, but. It's a no brainer. And. Other than merging, which we're just like, inroads, we're doing it, we're doing it, um. We need a light rail station in Flemington. Now, we can go out here by the old shopping center, called the old Flies and Shopping Center. Remember in the heyday, and we're always looking at presidential development, this development, that development. And of course, this lady here will tell you about, you know, doing a little too much, you know, too much, too much density at all, I mean, I agree, you have to watch, but, uh. You have to have, you have to have an attraction in Flemington. In order to have attraction in Flemington, well, I guess in order to have white rail station, you need density. You know, that's what the railroad people want, you know, they wanna see, well, is their business out here, if people wanna come in and out, come in and out, oh yeah, you gotta have something. And I guess we're a regional center, we're in the middle of things here, Clinton, you got PA, I mean, you got things to do within this area. But essentially, basically, if you don't get white rail here, you're dead, I don't care what you do.
So here's the issue with that.
I don't know what the issue is.
The issue is that the main rail line that goes around along Bridgewater and Raritan and all that. Is already full to capacity, they don't have any more room for additional trains. And so we are somewhere looking at probably north of forty years away. Before a light rail comes to life, minimum, minimum, because they have to address. All the way down the line, they gotta start with how to get more trains into New York City, from Newark and, and Secaucus to Newark. And, um, and then they have to work on how they get the other trains into Newark and Secaucus. Before they can put anything else new in, they are out of capacity on line, on rail lines right now.
You know, it's something, I've been around too long, I read too much, I expect, you know, America to, you know, to be America. But when you look at, uh, you know, that tunnel between England and France, when you look at the Chinese, what they do year in and year out. If you look at us, and I say this to people, you know, with a lot of experience, I said, you know. Billions of dollars for weapons, weapons, planes, use, new, tech, space. And as a hero on the ground, we can't even get people here to there with efficiency, with energy efficiency. With, you know, with the smarts that we have as people in technology and transportation and colleges. Now, we're, we're worried about, you know, putting a man on Mars, we're worried about doing that, you know, that's all alone good. However. Uh. You. You gotta keep, you know, you have to keep things in proportion. I mean, really, the last year, the Ukraine situation, the billion of dollars spending like this, you know, you all know very industrial complex. And you go, what? Couldn't even get a quality mask in the beginning of the pandemic.
Yeah, but the problem is, I mean, in the eighties and nineties, everybody wanted to be railhead trails, everybody said rail's dead, and they let all of those rail lines go. They pulled them all up and they made things like the Columbia Trail, um, and we destroyed our own infrastructure, now it's very expensive to put it back, and the. And Amtrak is out with capacity.
Like I say, you know, like I say, the Chinese, Europeans, I mean, they've been at this for years. But when you look at our highways and byways, yeah, there's that nice little space between the highways, you know, there's a nice little gap there where you could run something up, you know. You create your own, you create your own new rail, monorail system, you know. Uh, they're out of water in California, oh, yeah, but we pumped oil, we pumped gas, the pipelines cross country. Why don't we just pump water from where it's needed, you know, Louisiana's flooded now, or, or this area of the country's flooded now. Yeah, not, not think like, oh, we're not on water, we're gonna borrow from the Great Lakes, oh yeah, we'll, we'll borrow from the Great Lakes and still go over there. This is what I mean, this is what I mean.
We need to go and talk to Congress.
Well, like.
State legislature, because it's way out of our control.
You, you wanna know something, I've been down to Congress with the postal service, and you know what I told them? I said, I said to our own representative, who's no longer representing us, not mentioning names, I said, do you know how old our mail trucks are right now, sir? You know, I said nineteen eighty four to nineteen ninety four. We don't have airbags. We don't even have internet Wi-Fi. And I told them a good story, I said, you know what, we had a kid that was rear ended up on two oh two, like a Rite Aid, because there's a drop there, pick up there, just sitting at the light rear end. So of course, boom, everything went forward, because he was hit by a van, broke several ribs, nice young kid, you know, he just became a regular. And I told the congressman, I said, he said, no airbags, I said, no, he says, isn't that against the law? And I said, well, what are we speaking at, you know what, it's unconscionable.
So I'll give you this.
Wait, 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 that's my finish.
Okay.
And then I said to him, you know what, he might be scheduled to come back to work in another month or so. Guess what, he's gonna climb right back into the same shop with no airbag.
So I will give you this, I did, I did work with the service within the last two years. And I will tell you that the postal service has contracted over like billions of dollars for new vehicles. And I also know that they're starting to grow them out as we speak, and there are some that if you look around the neighborhood. You will see some of the, some, and there's another set coming, so around the country, there are gonna be new mail trucks, because they have addressed that.
Gosh, Wisconsin.
Um, but I, but again, you know, it's a matter of the money that needs to be spent in order to do that. That's the point.
Well, like I said, just a question.
It's gonna.
Is it according to the priorities for the borough, for the township? You know, for the range.
I just thought I'd throw that in.
Listen, I'll make one better, Pennsylvania doesn't require seatbelts in their school buses.
Alright, I hate to cut you, I hate to be that mayor that cuts you off, but we have an executive here.
Yeah, I had to make a walk for all the time I love her.
There you go.
And then Janet, such a might come a little bit.
He fired now, your wife.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Good distribution.
Alright, uh, we're putting in bills, can I have a motion to.
Till I'm up.
The amount of four, I'm gonna read it. Four hundred nineteen thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars and sixty eight cents, till you move the, the seconded, do I have a roll call please? God, it's killing me.
Miss Englehart.
Yes.
Mister Johnson.
Yes.
Mister Long.
Yes.
Mister Parker.
Yes.
Miss Rosetti. Miss Tilly.
Yes.
Thank you, can we have an executive session, we're gonna take a break first, this is the residence from twenty twenty three eight two. Executive session, we've got potential employment matters, potential litigation regarding liquor license. Uh, motion to go executive session as soon as I'm done.
Till I'm up.
Long will start.
Uh, all favor?
Yes.
I'm taking, uh, a, a four minute duration, but I can go first.
Everyone sign.
I think you sign, I'm not sure.
Thank you.
Settle for batteries. Yeah. Double A's.
I think I have.
I'm gonna get this off to you guys. Yeah, I'm sorry, so this is the draft of those fireworks, um, I'm not having a good. Well, they were the same, they have the same exact cost of the three years ago, that's what you're looking for. So I'm just putting it there, it's not about me and the weekend after day, but I got it today, I figured I am. I'm just kidding, I'm certainly not doing this tonight, but. But I'm giving it to them, so they have a copy of it, I don't know what else.
She was so long.
Okay, we're wrong, yeah. Okay, you know, you owe our take or the little recent. Remind me, guys.